I'd like to have the meeting of the Plainfield Board of Education to order tonight, February 13th, 2019. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I just asked everyone to bear with me tonight as if you have a cold. I'll try to control the coughing. Alright, so we're looking at minutes of the meeting of January 9th, 2019, our last board meeting. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent? Or from those minutes, any time for it? During that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
All abstained.
Two abstentions. Motion carries. Alright, we also have the minutes of the Board of Ed Budget Workshop on January 26th.
Want to accept the minutes of the Board of Ed Budget Workshop?
Real quick, out of the matter, but in the present, my name is Del Roman.
Correct.
So it needs two Ts. And then we accept it. Alright, I'm just saying.
That's right.
It doesn't need to be official.
So with the amended changes of fixing the meaning of spelling, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All abstained.
Two abstentions? Oh, motion carries. Alright, and then we have a minute of the January 28th, 2019 expulsion panel decision. If you're looking for a motion to approve?
I meant to approve, so I can...
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstained.
Alright, we have communications. Am I, I know I have this in front of me, is this later or is this now?
This one.
Yeah? Okay. So we do have, tonight with us, Shepherd Hill Elementary. They have worked very hard over the past couple of years on a process known as NIAAC accreditation for the programs, the preschool programs at Shepherd Hill. And tonight, NIAAC has sent along a certificate of recognition for Shepherd Hill. So we will pass this along to you, Mrs. Trahan, and if you can share your congratulations with the team, we're very much in appreciation of their incredible accomplishments. Moving on to you now. Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
In a little time.
So just for the public, I know many of you are regulars, but so NIAAC accreditation is a nice standard by which all preschools programs are recognized. For those who need to know, the standards are the important thing, the quality of the program that we provide to children is the important thing. But there are some peripheries, there were ten children who participate in the state's preschool program subsidized preschool program at Shepherd Hill. Those two, that was ten students are subsidized by $4,500. And the only way you can get that subsidization for those ten students in the extension of our readiness program is by being NAYC accredited. So that $45,000 over the next ten years represents $450,000. An effort like this not only represents quality program, it also represents a half a million dollars over the period of eleven years. So it's nice to know that there's a lot of parts to it. There's financial benefit, standards benefit, and a quality endorsement that says you are nationally accredited. So congratulations.
Alright, moving on to personnel resignations and retirements. Mr. DePietro, can you walk us through?
I will. I'll ask you to skip past the first one, just for sensitive reason, but I will tell you that we have three retirements that we want to recognize, all very deserving people. And I ask that you accept the resignation of Susan M. Round, her resignation for purposes for retirement. Susan Round came to us and has been working as a reading specialist at Shepherd Hill. And then in the last few years, she's been working half-time with another partner, which gave us a lot of opportunity to have two people who could cross over each other and think of how to best meet the needs of the children. So she's been working and she said she is, it's been a pleasure to be a member of the fine school community that she has been working with. And she said the decision to leave the teaching profession has been difficult because it's her passion and she still finds great fulfillment in working with children. So I ask that you will accept with regret the resignation of Susan M. Round, reading teacher at Shepherd Hill, her resignation for purposes of retirement.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion.
I move to accept the resignation of Susan Round with regret. I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Our second one is in a packet that came to your desktop, and that's because it came around the later, it was February 8th, but it is on the agenda to accept. And we also, you'll see why it's important that we act on this. Mr. Timothy Craig is a teacher of English at Plainfield High School, and he has been able to, he was doing some research and has determined that he would like to pursue other interests, and so he is asking to be released and that his last day, his resignation, would be January 22nd. This is the only day of our meeting that we would have an opportunity to provide him with advance notice that you have accepted his resignation. He has been working in the position for nine years, he enjoyed his role in being able to affect the countless children that he's taught. So I ask that you accept the resignation of Mr. Timothy Craig, English teacher at Plainfield High School effective February 22nd, 2019.
I move to accept the resignation of Timothy Craig, effective as of February 22nd. I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And then I would bring your attention to the first one, and again, everyone who retires have retired for purpose and reason. And so Mrs. Schmidt has also announced the fact that after much consideration, she is notifying you of her intent to retire. And she wrote a letter that, in terms of sharing it, I know she accepted the fact that this is a public meeting and she wanted you to know that she cannot imagine having any other career in her life, but that she has had health issues. This valiant woman, who went through a series of operations that she needed to go through, have taken a bit of a toll in terms of the fact that she indicated to you that now it's about the fact that she feels she has a job she would want to do with the children, and she feels that this is an appropriate time, given the fact that she has been granted a medical retirement. So she will, that becomes only in short term because as of, I believe, September, she will officially be at the retirement formal age that she might have considered. So it's a little bit in advance, but Mrs. Victoria Schmidt is an amazing courageous teacher, passionate, and everyone in that school just knows and loves this woman. And so I ask that you do accept with regret the decision of Victoria Schmidt to resign for purposes of retirement.
I move to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Mrs. Schmidt with regret. And I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I can tell you that although this was a year where she could not, she had to take leave for most of the year and now she made the decision, you'll notice that we're going to be talking about a plaque that goes on the wall for the commemoration of the reopening, and Mrs. Schmidt will be included among our faculty. So I think it's a nice tribute and honor that she's still being recognized as part of the faculty that helped me memorial school where it is.
Alright, so at this time, we're moving on to public forum. The purpose of public forum is for anyone to approach the board and address any concerns that they may have. The board is not allowed to respond unless the item is on an agenda for this evening. But is there anyone at this point that wishes to approach the Board of Ed to speak?
Yes, I have a question. I was at the Board of Selectment meeting when Mr. DePietro came, spoke about the special ed access, and I had a question about that.
Can I just say?
Art Gagni, Central Village. You had stated that Sterling, oh, hold on a second. You had stated that Sterling students came here, they're allotted in their district 14,000 or something, they come here, this is 15,000, they're getting a deal, you said, sort of, right? Is the same thing applied to special ed? You said we got new students from out of district. Is it a case where their district only allows 40? I don't understand how this works, that they allow 40 and they come here and it's 70? And how is that offset?
So we can respond, and that concept of the special education excess is part of the conversation. So for clarification, Sterling, we explained that Sterling, because they have a cooperative agreement with us, they pay a portion. So if 100 children come, and there are 600 children at the high school, they pay like one-sixth of the cost. And that comes out to a cost which is comparable or maybe even a little less than they pay for their per student. But it's a fair cost to us because they're bringing children and they're paying their fair share. And they also pay, by the way, just so you know, the quality of the collaborative agreement, they also pay, if they have 100 children and there's 2,200 children in our district, they also pay 1/22nd of the district cost. So they pay two parts. That's the program. For special education, whether it's Sterling or anyone else that brings a child that has a special education needs, we assign the full cost for what it takes to meet that child's needs. And that's done both by a program called a PPT. That's the meeting where they determine what that child's needs are, and those needs are defined by cost, and so we do charge a higher rate. The rates could be anywhere, I think Mr. Lucy could give us a better, but I think it could be anywhere 40 some odd, 45,000, and if they want even higher if it's absolutely intensive care.
Yes. You had mentioned different...
About 50.
And that's about 50. So they pay the full amount for any child that has special education.
And that would be the same in any district, if they were in their own district? They come to this district for a reason.
Correct. Is that rate calculated by percentage of what they do, or is it done by the cost of the service?
It's done by the cost of the service, but it's a four times factor. It's just a number that's created. It was understood by the cooperative, when the cooperative put together, you'd have a regular education rate, you have a special education rate, and you'd have the intensive care rate.
Right.
So regular ed students are somewhere around 13,000. Your special ed students are somewhere around 20,000, and then your intensive students are somewhere around 40,000 to 50,000. But I think, I think there might be a little bit of confusion going on here with the discussion of the special ed access. That's more the outplacement.
That's true, but his question is just, he wanted to know the clarification about how Sterling and the charges that have been assessed.
Well, hey, but because you mentioned Monday, out of district.
Right.
Okay, because, why are they coming to Plainfield schools? Why are they not going to their schools?
Oh, they do. Now, for that clarification, they only come if we happen to have the program. If our high school or our halfway's program is a program that they want to come to because we run it, they send them to us. If they want to go to Groden, they pay for it, but go separately. They only pay to us for a program that we can meet the needs of their children. So they have their own outplacement as well, that we don't pay for that or we don't collect that.
Okay.
But if they come to us, we charge them for our costs, yes.
Okay.
But that's a good, I'm glad you clarified.
Alright, is there anyone else at this point who wishes to address the Board of Ed?
I'd just like to share that I am upset about definitely Mr. Craig retiring. He's a great teacher and definitely impacted my life, so. And I'm actually in this class right now, so I wonder how that's coming about. But just like to share that, great teacher.
Alright, hearing that, I'll move on to student representative meetings. We have all of our representatives tonight.
I'm going to do mostly sports. So indoor track has been going on, and the girls' breast medley qualified for states. Louis Easton also qualified for states for the 300. And Cassie Carlson and Kate Carlson actually went to Boston University this past weekend and competed in a meet, which was really great. And Cassie Carlson also beat her personal record, which is also good. Girls' basketball is doing very, very good this year. Their record is 14 and 6, and I believe they're 10 and 0 in their division, so they won the PCC Division 3. Madison Kelly won athlete of the week, so she had gotten one for volleyball and now basketball, so she's hoping for softball too to make it to three for her senior year. The boys' record is 7 and 9, and they're playing Griswold, their rival, this Friday. So if they win that and they fall back to states. And we're also playing at Woodstock on Saturday and Monday home against Stonington. So we're hoping for a win on all of those.
I'd like to start it off with the wonderful dinner we had Monday night, because me, Marissa, and Kathy Marant were the select students of the month from February, so we got to attend the dinner at this time. And building on, theater, we have build nights, Wednesday nights, 6 to 9. Always a lot of volunteers, so come on, put some nails to the, or hammer some nails, rather, and start building the set. It all starts from scratch. We build the whole set, no companies involved with that, so it's all volunteer work.
What time, what's the hours?
6 to 9.
6 to 9.
And that's actually going on right now. I don't know, put it double over there. But dress up ads to March 1st for the theater. Always looking for people to sponsor us to get their name in the playbill, to help us pay for upcoming shows and years after. You can actually come to me, I'm the student director. We have the sheets, we have the ad forms, where they can either buy a full sheet. I know the front cover and the back cover are sold right now, but always looking for people to fill in, keep donations, things like that. Music, theater's also going to Talon March 14th, we're seeing, because they did Greece, they're doing Greece, and we have, actually, one of our student teachers is now teaching there, as a mission teacher and the theater director. So we're going to go visit them and see Greece, and the tour, because we were just cast there, and then now we'll see them. So much scared about that, but. We have indoor, they just got the theme Wild West, and Winter Garden also, they have combined competition Saturday and 23rd of February. And coming up next month, specifically Chamber, we have a combined concert on March 3rd, which I know you guys know as is a meeting night, so I might be happy to visit it. And I apologize in advance for that. We have, FBI LA today, we had the grants, the Valentine's grants going around, it was happy faces with the flowers and all that. And we're determining a date for dance in China in March.
Thank you. Alright. Moving on to PHF NEAS accreditation status.
Hi. I think what I'm going to do is turn the report over presentation to Mr. Biggood. Mr. Biggood, Cassie Norton, and Bethany Wagner are heading up our NEAS committee, work as steering committee for the school. And so our last accreditation process, our last visit was in 2010. NEAS stands for, the acronym is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's just a chance for an outside body to get a look and kind of give you some feedback and reflection on your processes and what you're really doing for kids. The process has changed, this is my third time I've gone through a process, and it's changed quite a bit even from the last time, even from 2010. There's a lot less, more standard categories, but there's more indicators. And there's actually two phases of the process. Our first phase, which we're kind of completing right now, is the self-reflection, where the staff and students and parents are on various committees looking at things like curriculum and instruction, resources for learning, facilities and things like that, and writing an honest report about where we are with everything and how we feel about everything. And that's the first part. And then we're putting that big report together, that goes to a smaller outside committee who comes for our first visit in April, April 30th, I think, April 30th to May 1st. They read that report, they go over that report with us, they give us their feedback and their opinion. And the next thing we do is we go into a road plan about where we want to go, how we want to improve upon this, on that process. So what we do is we set strategic targets, let me look to me about how we improve the things that we feel we could improve upon and get better at, and they kind of help us and give us a guide and eye and feedback of that process. As we move throughout that process, we have to come back and answer any questions that we might have about the process and more specific things. We'll have that self-reflection report probably up by March, because the faculty as a whole needs to ratify it and agree upon it, and then, you know, we're all getting ready for our April meeting. So I actually had two visits in the past, we had one bigger longer visit. Now you have a visit with a smaller team first, which is our April, and then we have a year to work on our movement plan going forward.
So this, that's this April?
That's this April, yes. But there's a year, there's a year between this first visit and the second visit. So they'll review what we found in our plan, review how we, you know, will make steps to go forward with things like that, and then periodically they check in on us throughout the process and offer, you know, their help and their assistance. And it's a good, it's a good lens because they knew almost every single high school in New England, so you get a lot of feedback on where other schools are doing best practices, and they can help shed all that with you.
So this initial visit is a change from what was done previously?
Correct. Where they were, they were just coming once before and they'd have a report. Now you actually have a chance to say, this is where we think we are at this point in time, this is where we hope to be, you know, one, two, three years from now. These are the steps that we're hoping to take to get there, and they will offer some feedback on that. And then they will come back a year later and see the gate, what progress we've made towards what's been set in that meeting. So it's a lot of ownership in the process for us, which is good. It's really, you know, faculty, student, parent community driven, so everything, all stakeholders together, driving towards what we, we held the vision of Plainfield High School being, what the vision of the graduate of Plainfield High School will be in the future, so. It's really, it's a good process.
Do they still include the interview with board members?
They...
Does that change?
I don't know that you, there's any board members for this first meeting. I know for the first meeting, I know...
Always in the summit, it is.
A central office definitely isn't, but I think at the summit meeting, they definitely will interview board members at that time, especially if they have questions, you know, about your role and how you support schools and what you would have that report, so.
Alright. Any questions regarding NEAS accreditation? Alright. So at this point, standing committees, individual reports. Do you just want to tell, because we have public members, I figured we could explain just what some of the committees do, like the curriculum committee and how...
Well, in general?
Yeah.
Well, the curriculum committee goes over any new courses that are being presented, plus textbooks or workbooks, there's all different little things that, whatever goes along with our curriculum that we need to support the students, we look at and bring it forward.
And when there is a course that needs approval, you guys look at it first, give feedback, and then it comes over to the board?
Yes.
Good. Alright, I know we also had a district and safety meeting. I'm actually going to ask Mr. Nathan, who chairs this committee, who kind of runs this committee, just to give a brief overview of what the committee does, just because it is a very impressive community engagement at that meeting.
So it is a rattle bar, five, it's together. Typically, there are representatives from each school. There might be the administrator, social worker, and or the building, the custodian, she does, they know, they look at all aspects of safety in the building. And it also includes the local police chief, local fire department, so they attend as they can. So at the last meeting we had, we had fire chief from Musa and the fire chief from Plainfield, as well as Chief Supernovate, and the fire marshal was also there. Plus, we had your social minister, the speaker there, and principals for different buildings. So we have anywhere from 15 to 20 people at every meeting, to get safety from the entire aspect, so that we were all on the same page, doing similar things, and that communication is key. For example, we talked about that this week, there was a call at a school, and there was a motion for non-sponsors. So when the fire department arrives, they press a button in the vehicle, which operates the lock box, where they get keys out to access our buildings. And so what we need to look at is, are they lubricated, are they up to date, are the keys in there, the right keys, are they labeled? So things like that are spoken about at these safety committees. Also changes, for example, you know, PMS, you know, we keep coming up to PMS and what happened there, but those conversations happen at the community level, so we can all make changes to make sure our building is safe. An example of that was, we used to be told during the winter, sub-zero temperature days, that keep all your doors open so the heat closes out some pipes. But now we've all made a change, wondering what we've learned from PMS, that we need to close our doors so we have those fire stops. So things like that come up at each meeting. Indoor air quality, you know, a whole host of other things, as well as some of our policies, like, that's what we're talking about bullying. And we get the perspective of teachers, social workers, custodians, administrators in our local schools.
Alright. Just on a note on the curriculum subcommittees, we just need minutes for those meetings when they're held, just as policy has done? Okay. Okay. In terms of the safety meeting, because it's not a full board meeting and there's so much sensitive data that gets discussed, that one, since it's not an officially sanctioned board meeting, is not, you'll never get minutes for those. However, I just felt that with all of the community engagement, that was a good point in the agenda, just to kind of show you all the people that come to the table to support our schools, everyone that's considering everything from safety and just moving us forward. I really feel it's a great opportunity to engage the public.
And I could drive you a general, generalities of me, you know, what we're talking, what we were talking about, I know some plans, but you can do that.
Alright, moving on to old business. This whole year, budget and facilities report, 2019.
Something from policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Skipping over you, Mr. Sugarman tonight. I know there is a policy that needs to be discussed. Just so that everyone knows, we're looking at the language on the sheet, this comes from the state of Connecticut. Policy is going to be addressing this policy at their February 20th meeting, but it is kind of imperative that we evaluate it tonight as the board and bring it forward so that we're compliant with the state regulations. So, Mr. Sugarman.
Yeah, so the motion tonight is for us to amend our district restraint seclusion in suzanne kind of policy, to come into line with the state policy, but to continue the process through the subcommittee that is actually meeting next week as well, to further refine and adopt a full restraint seclusion policy. There are some important changes that did happen through the last state cycle, mostly around definitions of restraint and seclusion, and the addition of this exclusionary timeout in defining that. So the motion tonight is just for us to come into alignment with that state policy, so we are using those appropriate definitions, and then we're going to continue the process next week through the subcommittee that's established.
So tonight, I'm looking for a motion for the Board of Ed to amend the district restraint and seclusion.
Where it says, it's in the box on that screen, read down. The Act clarifies that seclusion involves the involuntary confinement of a student in a room from which a student is physically prevented from leaving. Is that student supervised when they're in the confinement?
Yes, they added that definition where the difference between exclusionary timeout and seclusion is the staff member wouldn't necessarily be in the room, for the exclusionary timeout, the staff member is still actively involved with the student. But for seclusion, it might be, for example, if all the kids leave a classroom, a student is left alone just in their classroom. So it's not necessarily a physical location where you bring a student, it's the environment and how that environment changes. So everyone leaves this room and I'm left in here, and a staff member's standing at the door and saying, you cannot leave right now, you need to calm down, that is, that is by the definition of seclusion.
Okay, so what I'm concerned about, if the student can't leave because the door is locked, there's a fire?
No, so it has to be a staff member that's there, they might be on the outside of the door, and it actually further defines about the lockness of what you are and not not...
and not not allowed to do is locking the door as well. So those are like the earlier definitions that we're going to, uh, talk about at the subcommittee meeting.
But the staff member will monitor the student.
All right, so just to reiterate.
That's what I was looking for. Wait, I wasn't expecting it.
Let's kind of have this item and then we'll, we'll go back. So at this point, just to reiterate, this would be bringing, this motion that we'd be making would bring us to the current state regulations. So the Board of Education would be looking to, a motion to amend the district restraint and seclusion and exclusion policy to state that the district follows the state regulations for restraint, seclusion, and exclusion.
I move the, uh, the Board of Education to amend the district restraint, seclusion, and exclusion policy to state that, quote, "The district follows the state regulations for restraint, seclusion, and exclusion," end quote.
Before we second it, uh, just from my own understanding, um, we're making a motion to amend the policy. What we have actually amended to will still have to come before the board for a vote?
Yes.
You have, you have a pre-existing condition or a policy that says no policy that you have to circumvent the law and must be in alignment with the law. So this is just reaffirming that nothing in our policy is to violate it. And then you have to add the language, as he says, by condition, by committee.
I will second the motion.
Okay, motion's in need, I'm excited, any further discussion? Oh, in favor?
Get a question. When you go with that policy as well?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Oh, goes. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
This next one, policy 5144.1, 5144.1, will also come to the board, can you write?
They will all. Mrs. Catterell, were you asking about the curriculum about anatomy and physiology? They had, they had come down under new business. This was a report on just, so the public knew what the committees did. And at the bottom, there's an action prepared for the vote. If you look under...
Number nine?
D. Okay, no, I understand, it comes up twice. I know, you had a record.
I just wanted to add in, just to give our little plug to what the policy committee does, quickly please. So we look, um, at all policies of the district, obviously, but we go through a cycle where we go through all of the policies. So we update, make sure everything's up to date, is in line with laws. But then, as this demonstrates, this particular one for tonight, we also get a lot of notices of, of new changes to laws, new things that we have to change our policies to amend them to fit with. So we stay very active and we bring in people like Mr. Sugarman. We had the nurse at Bethany Ball at our last meeting because the policy pertained to her area of expertise. So we bring in the specialists that, that we need as we go through and just keep our policies, um, safe for our students and in line with the laws. Keep everyone safe and out of trouble.
And most recently, I think last year, maybe a year and a half ago, we finished revamping all of the policies and now we're going all through them all again. So it's a big cycle. Um, so it hasn't been long since they've either been re-uprooted or reestablished. All right, um, as we have new committees, we'll make sure to update the public on what those committees do, just so that everyone understands a little more about what it is that we do behind the scenes. All right, old business, budget and facilities report, 2019, Mr. Musier.
Thank you, Mrs. Heskey. Um, what I'd like to report tonight on our financials is that, uh, we have one area of major concern and that's in our outplacement tuitions. Um, as it was expressed to you at the poll at our FY 1920 board budget presentation, we're currently experiencing about $550,000 to $600,000 of additional costs and outplacements, uh, new, uh, outplacements that have, uh, happened since the creation of 1819 budget. Uh, what I'm going to be asking for tonight, or later, um, on the agenda on our new business will be for the board's approval to, uh, allow me to transfer funds from areas that the administrators have allowed to give up, uh, to cover the majority of these excess, majority of these outplacement costs. Uh, I think further at that point, Mr. DePito will probably explain, uh, the excess cost funding. Uh, that's another component to help us reconcile our 1819 plan. Another component of the, uh, budget and facilities report is the PMS recovery update. Um, I did meet with Al Supren, uh, a week and a half ago. Uh, I gave him all the reports and, uh, purchase orders and invoices associated with the costs incurred against our operating plan. Uh, the number now is down to where it was before. We're now at $671,000 of costs incurred. If you remember last month, I believe I said something around $720,000. The reason for the, uh, reduction is because the anticipated for Eastcon were substantially less than what we had planned. Uh, so our transition costs, we're, we're limited to $500,000, is at $225,000. So we're well under our tuition costs and our property claims component is $445,000. Uh, we have already received $300,000 to date and, uh, I'm anticipating, uh, further monies from, uh, the perma insurer within the next month or so. Uh, that's going to be something that'll come after Al, Mr. Supren, uh, reviews the financials that I gave him. Uh, he was very pleased with the package that he had, it was complete. Um, he had a half a dozen questions. I supplied him with the, uh, copies of the checks and check numbers that he had asked for. Everything tied together, so I think we're in very good shape. From the facilities perspective, uh, there's a few items to discuss. I'm just scrolling down to the next portion. Um, the eyebrow section at Shepherd Hill had, uh, been repaired by Silken Roofing, but apparently in the last storm still showed signs of leaking. I believe they had come back out, I don't know if they've done anything. Did they look at it again? Thank you very much. So we'll see what happens with the next storm. Uh, this seems to be a very ornery section of the building and just poor design and, uh, one of these days we'll get it right. Uh, at Musa Elementary School, there was a faulty circuit breaker that was replaced for the gym heater and that unit is now operational. Yes, thank you. Um, at Plainfield Memorial School, uh, there was a gym rooftop heating and cooling unit that, uh, wasn't working. It's now working on heat only and I was assured by the lead custodian that repair to the AC unit would happen once we found that we had budget availability. So if it doesn't happen between now and June, we'll have the money in next year and we'll make sure that that repair is taken care of right away. At Central School, uh, as you recall, the last significant storm that we had, rainstorm, uh, we had leaks, uh, popping up all over the place and it was apparently around what they called a penthouse. Uh, it's a small protrusion, uh, where they gain access to a roof, uh, at that building. Uh, they found that the EPDM had pulled away from the flashing and that has been repaired and now we'll just wait to see what happens with the next rain. Um, at the high school, as you may have all known when you came in tonight, uh, the parking lot lighting has been replaced, that's fantastic, Mr. Worth, it looks beautiful out there. Uh, well lit, very nice. Um, we are still waiting on this roof repair here. Uh, I was told by the lead custodian that that will probably happen at the, uh, beginning of the new fiscal year. Um, they can't seem to find the issue and, uh, they're going to keep researching it until they can determine exactly what it is. Uh, that's all I have.
Well, I think we, on the, on the roof issues at the library where we have the leak, are they also going to address?
This is the one that they're concerned about most.
And there was one over there.
There's another one over there too.
Okay.
Great. It's critical that we find this because apparently it's going more to...
This is a flat section, right? This is a very flat section?
It is a flat section.
All right. So moving then on to PMS recovery update?
Yeah. Uh, good evening. And then having to displace the students, uh, the teachers, everybody that had to make sure that that continued to be quality education program. But they're now in that building, they joined back in that building on January 2nd. So between August 14th, starting them on August 28th, and then coming back on January 2nd was pretty impressive. But in the process, two things happened at Plainfield Memorial School. Not only did they have to reconstruct where the damage was, simultaneously we had some LED work that was being done for new lighting and there were some areas that were so damaged that they went to the core of the inside of the building. So we virtually had the option to reconstruct. And again, we have to thank all the people involved and again, we have to thank, you know, Mrs. Hutchinson as the principal maintaining that. But what we wanted to show you is one of the benefits that when you come on the other side, when you come through the tunnel and the light is there, this is what you might be able to see. This is the new library that if you've been in there, some of our members went. The, the library had, I think, orange rubbed duct tape, um, benches, uh, and had shelves that were so high, if the kids were behind them, who knows, they could be doing anything at that point. Um, all of this has been reconstructed. Now, this is the new library, you'll see that there's a computer section back there. That, that bookshelf right here is on a rolling cart so that that can actually move around so that it can be a little more versatile. Thank you for the lighting, that helps a little bit. Um, many of the shelves, you'll notice these shelves right here, you see the color, this color is red. You'll notice these are red because you had a whole set, do you remember you guys? You had that whole set that was right there. You donated that, you didn't know you donated it? You donated that because you can tell that all of our bottom shelves are still empty. We have plenty of room, about 22, 24 percent, still space to add into the collections. And some of the top shelves are also light. So they had more than enough space and they really wanted more space for students to get together and to have meetings that could be faculty. So they donated a set and they only had to get a matching set that added, so it reduced the cost. And this is the library now. The section we're just looking was the left, this is the right. All the lighting is now done with LED. It's a bright, happy place. The entire floor was redone, no carboning. The board is very happy with that, no carboning. It's all tiled, it's all done to match. The school has basically a beige and a, and a hundred green coloring throughout. So they made that match inside there. They have an entire desk now that sets up a circulation. Every single book in that library has been refurbished. Every single book, approximately 125,000, 135,000 dollars. Where the, so the children have new books, they have a new facility, they have some new technology. Um, this is really a nice commentary on, the children came back to something in, in certain places. The foyer was really attractive. Um, this library, um, really just kind of epitomizes what can happen in recovery. You don't have to just get back to the base, you can actually get a little ahead of the game. At no additional cost because it was going to cost the same whether you went back to look ugly or look beautiful, decide beautiful. Right? Um, this is that first section way down there, this is coming through the corner. Um, and then you can see that's what that rolling cart looks like. So they have a little bit of versatility. If I go back, I can tell you that if you look over here, see this wall, this section? That's going to be an area where they can actually display and there'll be a couch that's going to be set up so they actually can have an interactive session with students with, um, video, live, or, uh, pre-recorded. So it's a pretty nice setup and because all of this is now done, we are now approaching the end. We are actually planning on May 2nd, at 1:00, it is a half-day professional day. So at 1:00 as the students leave, we'll have a ceremony for the students and the faculty in the morning as part of it. But then in the afternoon, we'll break the public. And you'll see that there's a, a number of people here in front of you. What the plaque will look like, the plaque will be a large, 20 by 30 inch, large, uh, wooden plaque, probably the marbleized black with the silver plate. We all look at it deciding whether we want to use a bronze on the wall because it's a green colored building or we use the black slate design. But we have a design, they have a copy of them. And the reason we're not sharing it to everyone because we're actually, it's a little bit of the excitement of what the plaque looks like. The top identifies the back that we've already invited, um, the first selectman and all the selectmen will come and she would be there as part of the presentation and congratulations. The chair and all the board members and the superintendent will be there, myself obviously, as well as our staff. And the plaque will commemorate the reopening of, of the school on January 2nd following the fire. And on each side of that plaque will be two other plaques. One, sincere appreciation from the board. Two, the Plainfield Fire Company number one, Musa Fire, Brockton, Hocke Fire, and Central Village Fire, who all came and converged to actually help reestablish and, you know, protect the building from further damage. And of course, Marshall Paul Yellen, who has been part of the whole process, all the way to going to Killenley and making sure that that building was safe and then coming back to check to make sure that the fire codes, which has Mr., um... Okay, Mr. Nabel, we'll go back to him. Mr. Nabel stated, that's actually been the catalyst for all of our schools now to change the way we're looking at the closing of our schools, shutting all the doors and making sure that fires are stopped a lot shorter so that we don't get the same amount of damage. And to the other side will be an appreciation for the police for what they did because they were on the spot. Within, I think, three to seven minutes, they stayed with the whole program. They've also helped on any one of the crises, so you'll have the police, the fire. And then we recognize the community in words, there's a lot of information that recognizes the board's appreciation to everybody, including churches and the community. Yes, we can say the word church, but the church and the community, some of them, members of the church that stood and made an honor guard when the kids were coming into Killenley. There are things that people don't realize, that there are just profiles in excellence, courage, support, contribution, passion. There's so many things that came out of this. But also we're listing the name of every single staff member on permanent duty, including Mrs. Schmidt, who'll be there because she was a teacher of record during that time. Um, and we include all of the people who contributed to the school. So we will have a plaque permanently blazoned on the wall. Your names will be there, you were invited to attend, the public's invited to attend.
Um, has the plaque been made yet?
Uh, no, it's, it's been designed in print.
Have we redesigned it so that they...
Because we have the correct names.
It looks like it's my name still wrong.
Once we get it wrong, we do it consistently, we will do it consistently.
Exactly, and it's the same, it's the same, it's the same way, you know?
And I'm trying to, it's going to be up to their fonts and everything.
Well, I'm just, I'm just seeing...
We want that in the minutes, the correct spelling. We see it right there.
It's that jazz.
Is that jazz?
Didn't do this right.
We will...
Mrs. Hutchinson, the library, this is a question from the library, it's absolutely gorgeous. But I have to say, what are you planning for Mutifas America Day?
So the state board representation is coming on that Friday, I think, March 4th.
CEA.
CEA, actually, CEA, it's coming on that, um, Friday, I think, March 1st.
That will be a wonderful reminder for that day. All right, LED lights conversion report. Superintendent, if you could, let me walk us through this.
All right, let me get to the document because I gave you... Yep, yep, uh, section eight. And I just want to make sure that you have two, two documents.
Oh, I'm sorry, just step back because we have a handout on the gymnasium floor. Mr. Musier, can you briefly talk about, um, the communication with, um, Mr. Supren and, uh, gymnasium floor?
Um, yes, I actually have been involved in this, but from my understanding, um, he has reviewed the floor with his flooring company and has determined that it should be completely replaced.
Yeah, that's just what, that's the same, whole whole thing up, do it again.
For this price of $34,452. It is reasonable, $35,000 to getting a brand-new floor.
We're looking to schedule it over, um, maybe four weeks. Either the week, it's going to take about 10 days, so the week before we're meeting it too, or the week, uh, next.
Is this covered by insurance?
It is.
Oh, great, that's, that's my question, that's an occasion.
So two things had happened. There already was some pre-existing damage, but that damage had been corrected and had been color matched. After the fire and because of the water, there was a square about this section right here and that was miscolored because they could not replace the exact patch. That was number one. But in addition, right after, just before the fire, they had stripped the floor. And so because they stripped the floor but had to bring all of the fire damage information, uh, books and materials into the gym, it stayed there for sort of about three months. When they removed all of that, the soot is, is ground into the vinyl. So they showed them that you, you can't buff it out and they can't do that middle section. And so what you see is two sections, a strip where there was... And so what you see is two sections, a strip where there was a long crack, and they showed you that on the side, which on the first picture, that's against the wall. That, you can't see it because it's black and white, but instead of being crisp and clear like beige tiles, they're beige with like a black silt a little bit in it. And they finally agreed after they had an official inspection, that that really has to, you can't replace sections, you can't match it. So the whole thing gets done. They also get a new gym.
But also in that expansion during their, where we had fire damage, water had, they determined when they came and did the inspection that water had seeped underneath it and made it even worse. They would have to replace a whole section of tile there, and there's no way to match that plus.
And you go from one unit being a hundred and eight watts, one unit goes down to twenty-eight watts, to fourteen-watt bulbs. That's it, from four bulbs to two bulbs, and you're going from a hundred and eight watts to twenty...